The time is 6:04 PM on this, the 22nd day of February of 2024. And I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. May I have Mr. Delgado say the prayer and Mr. Martinez, the Pledge of Allegiance?
All rise.
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts. And we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, for our faculty, our staff, and our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Help us to make the decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mrs. Ramos, could you please call roll?
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge Jerry Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos?
Present.
Erica Benavides Garcia?
Present.
Sendiliendo?
Present.
Mercurio Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Esteban Rangel?
Absent.
Karina Alizondo?
Present.
Tita Cantubella?
Absent.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this is, this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. I want to recognize Mrs. Tita Cantubella as present. Next item we have is number three, approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of January 31st, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second, a motion by Mr. Delgado, a second by Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four is public testimony. Do we have anybody? Thank you. Fifth item is recognitions, introductions of personnel and new personnel actions for the month. 5A introduction of personnel, personnel actions, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board members. It's a pleasure and excited to get this week almost completed and certainly looking to the future. It is an honor for me to introduce some of our new hires that are here with us tonight and a few that could not be, but I will mention their names anyway. Our instructional lab technician for cosmetology, Ms. Diana Costilla, if you'll stand and please remain standing because we're going to recognize all of you and then take a photo. Leonardo Gonzalez, information security analyst, Leo. Veronica Garcia, our new, this is a promotion, this is Sergeant Garcia now. Is she here? No, she's not here, okay. Also, that could not be with us, our fire science instructor is Luis A. Montemayor, wildlife technician, Keisha Calderon, and workforce navigation specialist, Brianna P. Castro. These are all of our new hires and one promotion, so we're very excited about these folks. And we'd like you all to have a chance to meet them, so if you'll join us here in the middle for a photo?
Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Julie Kelly, for the record, Faculty Senate President. Thank you, board members, Madam President, administrators, members of the community. Thank you for being here, and my name is Julie again. First of all, I want to say I apologize for not being here in January. I had flu. I'm no longer sick, but just I'm going to be wearing a mask for the rest of the semester because I really didn't want to get sick anymore, so I apologize for that, again, not being here. I do have some updates, board members. And pretty much, this is, the first item was something that I really wanted to go over in January, just as a recap. And then just kind of introduce our new department senators and then go over two highlights from two of our departments that we have, mathematics and the natural science department. But just for the graduation, okay, I know we can see it. I've been getting positive reviews from December's graduation. Again, I wanted to mention this in January, that the faculty are really excited that we held it in December because it does give our students the opportunity to be able to be on stage and these students would normally not come to graduation in May, so the faculty are excited. I called HR and I wanted to know how many of our faculty members attended and we were close to 90% of the faculty members there, so my goal is hopefully for spring graduation to have 90-plus faculty attend our spring graduation, so that's going to be my goal for the spring graduation. We do have two new senators in the Faculty Senate, one of them, Dr. Meng, he belongs to our chemistry department. He has been in education for 15 years. He graduated from the University of Blas Pascal in Illinois, so we're really excited to have him on board. His hobbies are soccer and hiking, so again, Dr. Meng is one of our new senators. The other one is Nesar Serato, he's in the computer department, computer science department, and he holds a Masters of Information Technology, also a Masters of Science in Mathematics. So he's highly qualified, he has a CCNA certification, this is Cisco certification, among other certification that he has. So I really want to welcome these two new faculty to our Faculty Senate. Then I have, again, been going around different departments, asking them for initiatives. What is going on in your department? Is there something that you would like for me to highlight to the board in terms of what you're doing? We'll start first with the mathematics department, and they do have two events coming up. The first one in March, they're going to be celebrating Pi Day. Pi is a constant, it's a number. It is a really extensive number, 3.1415926535897, and there's many more digits, but for short, 3.14. And they usually celebrate this on March 14th, however, March 14th will be during spring break. So they are going to celebrate Pi Day, March 19th, after the holiday. And they're going to be having events here at the Kazon at both campuses and events such as selling or serving frito pie, they're going to be raffling or giving away pies, and they might have a pie eating contest as well. So if you guys are free, please join the math department. And then the following month, in April, to promote mathematics statistics, they're going to be showing a movie here at the Kazon Center called A Brilliant Young Mind on the 24th. So if you're free and your time schedule allows, please join the math department at the Kazon Center so we can watch this movie. From what I hear, I have not seen it myself, it is about a math prodigy who is competing at the International Mathematics Olympiad, and then there's a young girl involved, so, you know, hopefully this is a good movie and PG. But again, if you have time, please join us for this, really it's awareness to promote, to increase, and really for people to fall in love with math, because a lot of people are scared of math, so I'm hoping that this promotes our young students to join us. Then, these are some images from last year, I just have a few from the Pi Day. Again, as you can see here, the math department went all out. It was our first event this year, we're hoping to promote greater numbers. And again, just another image from Pi Day from last year, this is Mr. Cesar Santos, one of our senators. And then the other highlight is from my own department, the natural sciences department. We did celebrate Safety Week last week, so from February 12th through the 16th, what we did was we had a week-long event of activities with our students to promote awareness on lab safety. Topics we covered were PPE, hazards, lab equipment, what to do in case of emergencies. And then we had an activity on Valentine's Day at the Kazon Center where we encouraged our students to come and learn about lab safety. It culminated with the faculty, the staff, and the lab technicians being trained again on lab safety, what to do in case of emergencies, who to call, the protocols, the national standards. And these standards are universal, so it doesn't matter where you're from, what country, but these are going to be universal standards that are implemented for lab safety. So again, this was a week-long, week of activities on lab safety. And then, one update, I've been talking about this Memorial Brick Project for a while, board members, and I wanted the bricks laid last month, but after meeting with the committee, they said, hold on, it's cold, you can't just go out there, you know, in 20-degree weather and put bricks. Okay, fine, so we're eyeballing something perhaps in April, the last week in April, to lay 15 bricks and potentially 15 more. And again, with your support, board members, really, this is something where we honor our faculty that have been here, that have retired. Some of our bricks that are coming in, as you can see, some of our faculty have been here for 45 years, 44, 50 years, Dr. Jacinto Juarez. So again, we really want to commemorate and honor our faculty. And hopefully, once we have these 30 bricks in April, you can join. We're going to have a small event, maybe have some coffee, some pan dulce. And again, I really want to invite you guys to attend this wonderful event in April. Any questions? Any questions?
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
It's nice to see the bricks being laid out, because when I first came on to the board in 2014, Simbical talked about it, but we just, we just said, yeah, it's going to happen. And so it's very nice to hear that that's going to take place and those bricks will be laid for those members that have either served or will continue to serve in our, in the capacity of teaching. So thank you very much. Look forward to that event.
Yes, thank you. And again, as soon as we have the date, I've been wanting to run since January, but they're like, wait, wait, hold on, but we will announce it to everybody. And again, like I said, I would like to have a small ceremony, invite the community, invite you, and we can potentially invite family members that are going to be having their breakdown. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Have a wonderful.
Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. I do feel that, I would say that Dr. Jacinto Juarez is the only one that actually has had, or been employed with Laredo College for 50 years, and I think we ought to give them a little different type of recognition.
Blank.
Is that a fact?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's quite an honor.
Mr. Blanco?
Mr. Blanco, I forgot, but you're right, you're right. But I think those faculty members that have reached this type of impressive number of years ought to have a little different type of...
A gold brick, perhaps?
I guess, I don't know, but I think they ought to be given a special recognition. That's what I'm trying to bring up. Perhaps you can come up with something that will actually stand out. And we're very, very fortunate that we have had highly, you know, faculty members that have been very dedicated to this institution and we ought to at least give them the proper recognition that they certainly deserve. But that's my observation.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly. Is that all?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Esteban Rangel, present. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll move to the next item, number seven, Laredo College Student Government Association Report. Ms. Ana Guisela Gigi Perez Salaman.
Good evening, everyone. For the board president, President Dr. Minita, and board members. It's a pleasure to be here, and I want to give the updates. First of all, is the strategic planning committee. We are very thankful that you all, you all count on us about the planning, strategic planning committee. We felt very, very excited about it. We like to bring our ideas, and also, I felt like I was being heard. Like, they were asking me questions about, about my experiences in college. So I really had a good time. It was our SGA members and also one student, Alfredo Moran, Remundo Gonzalez, Carlos Morales, and myself, Gigi Perez. Next item is El Cenizo Book Drive. We did this last week. We helped to take books to El Cenizo Library. I really like this, sorry, I really like this activity. I really like to help to the community, and we felt very, very grateful to have this opportunity too. We were around 20 students who helped to take the books to El Cenizo, and we also were with the Rody Club and IBC Bank. And I like these opportunities for the students to do community service. Also, we had hearts and hoops last week, it was for the Valentine's Day, and everyone loved the activities. We had painting, students were able to make bracelets for their friends, family, loved ones. And also, we had free pizza sponsored by the Office Student Life. So we had a very, very good time, and also, we had the activities Ms. Juliana said, and also, we had other activities by outside place. And also, our students went to Mr. South Texas Luncheon. They have the opportunity to, they had the opportunity to talk to other people about the event. And also, they had a very, very good time. They told me like they were talking about school, they were talking with the president, and they really enjoyed, enjoyed you being there. We also have the WBCA parades, and the students and myself and the vice president, Remundo Gonzalez, participated on it. We really enjoyed going there. We went to the youth parade and also to the big parade. The, I'm very, very happy the community knows LC like, like that. And also, they were very excited about us, and everyone was like doing the new LC. And an update for our region, for DJCSG region, we are region six. So our vice president, Remundo Gonzalez, is the historian for our region. He created a website from zero, so we now have a website for the whole region. And he, with the help of our great advisor, Pedro Rivera, created the new website. So now we are, we can be found on the internet, and we also have a new Instagram that Remundo also created. And also, myself, SGA president and the director of the Office Student Life, Pedro Rivera, had interviews with Telemundo and local radio. And also, me, myself and Remundo Gonzalez, or Vice President, are going to be the emcees for the Fun Fest. And last but not least, right now is taking place the Tache State Conference at San Antonio. We have all students over there and they are having fun. They are learning and they are very, very happy to be there. And also, right now, we have Direct Day in the Maravillo Gym. The students are playing volleyball and they are having fun. And thank you. Any questions? No?
Any questions? Chair recognizes Mr. Ronca.
Yes, Ms. Perez. I have a very good friend of mine that lives in El Cenizo. She wanted me, Ms. Lada. She's a huge advocate for, for trying to do good things in, in El Cenizo. She went ahead and she called me and she said, please tell your students, thank you so much for the books. They were very excited. So she's, she's going around promoting that, that you guys donated books, that there's new books there and everything. So she just told me, please tell them that we are very grateful for what they did. It's a very humble community, El Cenizo. And I think that it's, it's a great thing what you guys did. Not, not taking away everything else, but she just wanted me to make sure to let you know. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Madam Chair, Trustees, I, I do want to recognize Gigi tonight. I'm sure you all have noticed not only how she's been able to blossom this year as President of Student Government, because she really, really has. But more importantly, what she's done to engage the students on campus and really build a Student Government Association as the leadership organization for all of our students at both campuses. I think she's done an outstanding job. And, and she's really worked very hard to include everybody, that everybody feels included and that everybody feels like they're a part of Laredo College and they're proud of what they represent and who they are. And so I'm very proud of her and all the work they've done. And, and I think she deserves a great round of applause.
Keep it up, keep it up.
Thank you, thank you so much. And also, I want to let you all know if you have any community service activities, like we are open, we are open to help you. Like, I really love doing that. So. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
They've done great.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Madam Chair, before we go into consent agenda, I'd ask that the following policies from 8G, BBD, Local Board Members Orientation and Training, and BG Local Administration Organization, both of them be placed before, for discussion and possible action. That's my first motion, if I could have anyone.
Check.
Second for me.
Chair, I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos and I have a second by Mr. Ronca. Any discussion?
None.
None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then I have another one.
Okay. Yes.
And Madam Chair, 8H, CJ Local Transportation Management and DEA, DEAB Local Compensation Plan Wage and Hour Loss. That would be deferred to a later date. It doesn't require a motion, correct, sir? It does?
Yes. Chair recognizes Mr. Mirror.
Madam President, yes, we want to have a motion to pull those two out so that they're not adopted with the consent agenda. So I would make a motion to remove them.
So that's my motion.
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos. I have a second by Mr. Ronca. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, may I make a clarification?
Yes.
The 8H policies are CJ Local Transportation Management, DEAB Local Compensation Plan Wage and Hour Loss.
And those are the only ones?
Those are the ones that are going to be deferred to a later date. They're going to continue to review.
So the first two on 8H.
All of the rest of the Gs are going to be consented.
I see. Thank you.
Okay. So the next item is the Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ronca.
I motion to approve items 8A to 8F with the consideration of reading, I believe we have to read the, the resolution. That's my motion.
The resolution's further down, isn't it?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's true. I apologize. I'm sorry. I motion to just approve 8A to 8F.
Second.
So I have a motion. I have a second by Ms. Lindo. Any discussion?
None.
Madam Chair, clarification?
Yes.
HG and H, 8H are included in Consent Agenda.
Yeah, but you pulled them and you put them on.
But you pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. And okay, I'm in my motion to also approve G and H as well.
Excluding.
Excluding.
With the exception of.
Okay, are we adding them or removing?
No, we're taking. We're, we're pushing them down to discussion.
Well, that's why I said I motion from 8A to 8F.
But HG.
But there's others on.
Oh, you want to, okay.
Yeah.
All of them except for.
Okay, motion to approve items 8H, 8A to 8H.
8H, thank you.
Sorry.
So.
Apologize.
So I have a motion and then I have an amended by Ms. Lindo. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the next item will be, will be 8G, which is the.
BBD.
8G, the BBD Local Board Members Orientation and Training. And the BBBI Local Board Members.
No, BG.
Oh, I'm sorry. BG Local Administrative Organization. Ms. Ramos, I recognize, Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I, we had the meeting on Monday. And it was a very, very important meeting. We talked about the updated policies. And I specifically wanted to bring these out to review one of them in particular that I felt that the board members needed to hear about. The TASB Policy Update 46, most are updates. Many are as a result of the SB 17, the, from the legislative session that just passed. But most of them deal with not being able to have a diversity, inclusion, equity and inclusion offices and training. So I, before we vote on, on this particular one, I highly recommend reading these updated policies as they affect the policies in place, especially those that are local. And I do want to bring awareness to the new policies that were added that we were just, that we voted on. BG Administration Organization, CFE Purchasing and Acquisition Vendor Relations, CU Research, FA Equal Educational Opportunity, and FAA Local Equal Educational Opportunity Pregnant and Parenting Students. So those are additional ones, but we voted them through Consent Agenda. We did take out one, which was BG Local Administration Organization. And that one is just, the reason I took it out is because it's a brand new one. And so that, that way you all can see it. At the present time, I would like to bring your attention to BBD Local, which talks about adding the following information that's listed on your paperwork. "We are adding Board Member Shall Complete a Texas Open Meetings Act Training as specified by Government Code Section 551.005, no later than the 90th day after the member takes the oath of office and annually thereafter." I bring to the Board the addition of the word "and annually thereafter" because it is recommended that we place "no later than the 90th day after the member takes the oath of office." However, I am bringing to the Board adding "and annually thereafter" for all Board Members to consider. My motion is to add the words "and annually thereafter" to the BBD Local so that we can have trainings on the Texas Open Meetings Act continuously on a yearly basis.
I second that.
Mrs. Well.
No, I, I think it's.
No, there's, there's.
Chair recognizes Mr. Mirror.
So the Board does have a motion on the table. It's been made and seconded. You can discuss it. And eventually, you'll have to vote on it. If there's going to be another addition, you already, you could amend that motion or make a second motion to accept the second addition. But you do have a motion on the table now.
I reserve the right to make a second motion, so I want to do that first so that the Board Members can review. And if they have any discussion, we can talk about it right now. But then I'd add my second motion to come up in a little bit after I finish that first one.
So I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion?
I just, I'll just say, I think it's a good idea. I think it's something that's very important that we need to be reminded of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So your second motion, Mrs. Ramos?
My second motion, in the back of BBD Local, with "Under the Public Information Act Training, Board Member Shall Complete the Public Information Act PIA Training as specified by Government Code Section 552.012, no later than the 90th day after the member takes the oath of office and annually thereafter." I bring to the Board the words "and annually thereafter" so that we can have a continuous opportunity to provide training on the Public Information Act, which is the PIA. We have been, it has been recommended to place only 90th day after the member takes the oath of office. I'm bringing to the Board the words "and annually thereafter." My motion is for the PIA.
Second.
So I have a motion. I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is 8H, which is a CJ Local Transportation Management.
No, those were. Those were deferred.
I have BG.
Which one?
BG Local Administration Organization.
Didn't we just do, where's the BG?
Didn't we, did we just do that?
We already did that.
No, we, we pushed it.
So on the 8G, we have the BG Local Administrative Organization?
Yes.
Okay. That's the next one.
The, the, I would just like to bring to the Board the BG Local Administrative Organization. This, I ask for it to be pulled out because it's an additional one that has been placed. And the only thing that I do want to say about this policy from the committee meeting that we had is that, again, these are additional policies that are being in place as a result of SB 17. And this includes not being able to have diversity, equity and inclusion offices or even trainings. So just so that you all will understand, what I bring to the Board is just that we're, we're making this additional policy that's on the local side. But we need to read the rest of them because they all deal with certain things that are being taken out or certain things that are being placed in. And, you know, it's interesting to know that, you know, we, we take it for granted sometimes. That we know that the diversity, equity and inclusion was there because it was fair to all concerned. But now we are guided by.
Prohibiting.
Higher powers. And prohibited, guided and prohibited to not have certain things. So my motion is to just bring to the table, to the Board, BG Local Administrative Organization as an additional local policy to, to this Board. I mean, it's going to be there, but I would still like your approval for that.
So is that your motion?
That's my motion to bring, to, to approve it, the additional.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, a second by Mr. Ronca and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board Members.
So 8H, we're okay?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'm going to go to number nine, Discussion and Possible Action. Nine A is Tenure Recommendation for Consideration and Approval by Laredo College Board of Trustees, Dr. Eriberto Hernandez.
Good evening, Board Members. Dr. Ramirez, colleagues, Eriberto Hernandez, Dino Workforce Education Academic Affairs Lead. It's a great honor that I present on behalf of our Provost Vice President, Dr. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina, our tenure track faculty that are being recommended tonight for tenure. After an exhaustive review of their past five years of service, they have all adhered to the community service, college service, and departmental service with great dedication and passion. They've exhibited a true passion not only for their respective subject areas, but in the transfer of knowledge to our students. I will be presenting the faculty one by one and highlighting their personal accomplishments. I'll also ask for the respective deans and chairs to join us as, as they're coming up. First, we have Mr. Hassan Escamilla. Mr. Hassan Escamilla attended Laredo Community College from 1995 to 1997, where he received his associates in computer electronics. Since then, he has worked in this field. And in 2001, he started his own business named LanTech. In addition, in 2005, Mr. Escamilla started working as an adjunct instructor and eventually became a full-time instructor in 2018. As an instructor, he has been able to share his experiences in the classroom and also has employed many students in his company, which has led to many students to work for bigger companies and advance their careers. Mr. Escamilla enjoys sharing his knowledge with students and guiding them so they can have a successful future, just as he has. He hopes that he can continue doing this for many years to come. Next, we have Ms. Gracelia, Graciela Y. Gonzalez. Ms. Gonzalez is a Medical Assistant Program Director and Instructor at Laredo College, where she started as a Health Science Adjunct Instructor in 2018. She has a 22-year teaching career in various educational levels and holds degrees from Baylor University, Laredo College, and the U.S. Career Institute. Ms. Gonzalez has received several awards for her educational excellence and leadership, including a Golden Apple Award nomination in 2005, the School Bill Award in 2023, and the NiSOD Award in 2024. She is also an active member of various professional associations and a happy wife to Iran Gonzalez and a mother to their 10-year-old son, Michael Gonzalez. Next, we have Mr. Alonso Laurel. Is the Assistant Professor of Radiologic Technology, Clinical Coordinator, and Radiation Safety Officer. In 2004, he graduated from the program he now teaches. His passion for the past five years has been to teach the upcoming generation of radiologic technologists where they can contribute to our community and the workforce. Mr. Laurel earned a Bachelor's Degree in Radiologic Sciences with an emphasis on education from Midwestern State University in 2011 and a Master's Degree in the same field from the University of Texas at MD Anderson School of Health Professions in 2022. He holds three credentials in radiography, nuclear medicine, and radiation safety. Mr. Laurel has 20 years of experience working in South Texas facilities and is proud to support Laredo College classrooms and help guide our students into their new careers. Next, we have Mr. Ever Eli Lopez. Is a proud, is a proud native of Laredo and a member of the Department of Social Sciences at Laredo College. Over the past five years, he has devoted his time to teaching history. As an educator, his mission is to promote intellectual development and critical thinking within a collaborative learning environment. Additionally, Mr. Lopez aims to utilize history as a guiding tool, imparting valuable lessons and shaping the minds of our future leaders dedicated to building a brighter tomorrow for the city of Laredo. Last but not least, we have Dr. Michael Martinez. Has taught in the Laredo College Associate Degree Nursing, ADN and Bachelors of Science in Nursing BSN Departments for the last five years respectively. Currently, he is a Program Director of the ADN and the BSN Programs at the College. Dr. Martinez has also worked in the Laredo's, in Laredo's healthcare community since 2014. Nursing and healthcare is his passion and he plans to continue to instill all of his knowledge towards the Laredo College nursing graduates for many years to come. Members of the Board, I present to you the Academic Affairs Division's Tenure Recommendations.
Oh, we have to vote. Not yet.
Let him sweat first.
No, no. Okay, hold on.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the tenure recommendations for consideration and approval by Laredo College Board of Trustees.
Second. So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second by Mrs. Vela and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion?
No.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, now we can take a big turn. Madam Chair. Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Madam Chair, I would like to recognize these faculty members. What most people don't understand about the evaluation process of our faculty is that there are four different instruments that they are guided by and evaluated with. It's not once a year, it's a, it's an ongoing thing all year long. And it does include student evaluations, it includes department chair evaluations, it includes their, their service and work, their academic work and their service. And so these four instruments are very detailed. And very recently, the faculty themselves, led by the, the deans, have updated and upgraded their, their evaluation instruments, they're continuing with four instruments. But it is a very rigorous process. So by the time they get selected for tenure, they've gone through, through quite
Yeah.
a, a, quite a process. And this is annually, it's not a one-time thing, it's annually that they get evaluated with those four instruments. So kudos to them for, for being diligent and some of them continuing their education, continuing their professional development, and still providing the quality education, the best quality education that we can provide. So congratulations to the faculty.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next item is nine B. Approval for out-of-country travel for Mr. Renee J. Montemayor and Mr. Julio Reyes Jr. to Salamanca, Spain, June third through the fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, for the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities Fourteenth International Conference, Innovation and Technology for an Inclusive and Diverse Workforce. Dr. Minita Ramirez?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. The reason we're bringing this forward, you, you all must approve international travel. When both of these gentlemen were selected to be part of the Leadership Institute for HACU, there are three different meetings throughout the year that, where they have to go, and then there are meetings in between that they, that they do online. And, and they participate in leadership development opportunities and teaching and professional development and all this. So fortunately for us, both of these gentlemen were selected to go on the third one, which is in Salamanca. And HACU is paying for part of the trip, we're paying for part of the trip. But we are excited for both of them to attend. They've been very actively involved in HACU. And we're very proud of the work that both of these gentlemen are doing. And very recently, as a matter of fact, right now, Renee Montemayor is at TACHA, where he is being recognized with a national award for Educator of the Year. And so, and, and he's continuing to do his research, he's published several numerous articles this year and has been asked to present at this international conference. And so both of them, I hope you all will agree with me, have done an outstanding job this year. And I'm highly recommending both of them attend this conference.
Motion approved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Angel, I have a second by several. Mrs. Ramos, Mrs. Vela, Mrs. Garcia, and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We'll have, we'll have Mr. Montemayor come, after he comes back from TACHA, he'll, I'm sure he'll want to come and tell you all about it.
Thank you. My next item is nine C, Approval of Resolution Requesting That the Laredo College Board of Trustees Approve The Submission of a Grant Application for a Total of Three Hundred Thousand in Grant Funding by the Laredo College Grants Office For the Twenty Twenty-Four, Twenty Twenty-Fifth Laredo College Police Department Equipment Enhancement Project to the State of Texas. Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office, Dr. Diana Ortiz, and Mr. Gabriel Lozano.
Madam Chair, I motion to approve, this was discussed in the Finance Committee meeting.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Angel, and I have a motion by Mr. Delgado. But before we approve, I need to read the resolution, is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Or does?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Ortiz speak first.
No, no. She, you don't have to.
Okay.
You can just read the resolution.
She already talked.
So the resolution is, Whereas Laredo College Finds It in the Best Interest of the Citizens of Laredo and South Texas, That the Laredo College Police Department Equipment Enhancement Enhancement Program, Project Be Operated for the Twenty Twenty-Four, Twenty Twenty-Fifth Fiscal Year. And Whereas the Laredo College Board of Trustees Approves the Submission of a Grant Application by the Laredo College Grants Office in the Amount of Three Hundred Thousand to the State of Texas Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office For the Twenty Twenty-Four, Twenty Twenty-Fifth Laredo College Police Department Equipment Enhancement Project Under the Following Funding Programs. Three Hundred Thousand Fiscal Year, Two Thousand Twenty-Five Operation Lone Star Grant Program, State of Texas E-Grants Application Number Five One Five Four Five O One. Whereas Laredo College Agrees to Provide Applicable Matching Funds When Required for the Said Project, But No Matching Funds Are Required for This Grant Application As Noted by the State of Texas Guidelines. Whereas Laredo College Agrees That In the Event of Loss or Misuse of the State of Texas Office of the Governor Funds, Laredo College Assures That the Funds Will Be Returned to the Office of the Governor in Full. Whereas Laredo College Designates Dr. Minita Ramirez President As a Grantee's Authorized Official, The Authorized Official Is Given the Power To Apply, For, Accept, Reject, Alter, or Terminate the Grants On Behalf of the Applicant Agency. Now Therefore Be It Resolved That the Laredo College Board of Trustees Approves the Submission Of a Grant Application for a Total of Three Hundred Thousand In Grant Funding by the Laredo College Grants Office For the Twenty Twenty-Four, Twenty Twenty-Fifth Laredo College Police Department Equipment Enhancement Project To the State of Texas Office of the Governor, Public, Public Safety Office, DueLY Resolved by the Board of Trustees of Laredo College on the Twenty-Second Day of February Two Thousand Twenty-Four. So I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Next item is information items, number ten A. February Two Thousand Twenty-Four Enrollment Report, Dr. Fred Solis, Ms. Jessica Trevino.
I saw it. I saw it. That's impressive, growth, continuous growth.
Good evening, Madam President, the Steamboard Members, President Ramirez, colleagues, and visitors. My name is Dr. Fred Solis, I'm the Vice President for Students' Access and Enrollment. And presenting along with me tonight is
Good evening, Jessica Trevino, Associate Vice President of Enrollment Management.
I'll begin by, first of all, reminding the board of the different sessions that are currently ongoing. The current session that we have, for which we have registration for, is actually our Spring Session Number Two, of which we will be also registering this coming Saturday, and we'll be sharing a little bit more about that. The term will begin soon, that's going to be starting on March the eighteenth. Spring Session Number One is soon to end, and that will be ending in March the seventh. I do want to share with the board that as we do our enrollment comparisons, you're going to see that last year in this, for the spring semester, we had a total of nine thousand four hundred and fifty-four students, of which we use that as a base to then project the spring enrollment for this year. We went with a conservative number of five percent in our projection, very similar to how we did it in the fall semester. And so we were expecting an enrollment of nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven for the spring. As it turns out, we ended up with ten thousand one hundred and eighty-six for the spring, which exceeds our projection by two percent. So instead of a five percent increase, we ended up with a seven point seven percent increase. So again, testament to all the hard work that all the Enrollment Management Division has been doing alongside with the Division for Student Success as well. Currently, we have about approximately seven hundred and twelve students who are enrolled in the Spring Session Only, or the Second Spring Session, which means that they're not here right now, but they will begin classes later on in March. Our distribution continues to demonstrate that half of our student population, or fifty-one percent, is still dual credit, followed by our regular or LC students of forty-three percent and a small section of our student enrollment for spring coming from the winter semester, which is six percent. When we take a look at the Continuing Education Enrollment Numbers for the year, as, as I reported to you last month, quarter one, which was the period of September through November of two thousand and twenty-three, we had an eighty-eight percent increase in our enrollment. As I presented last, last, last month in January, we had not started the last month of the second quarter, which was February, which is soon to end within a few days or so. So even though we're not done with February yet, we already have an increase of over twenty-eight percent compared to last year. Quarter three is currently open for registration on continuing ed. And currently, we have about a hundred and nineteen students already enrolled. Now, quarter three and, and quarter four represents the timeframe for which the Laredo Cares Version Three should be enrolling students as well. And so we are anticipating those enrollments to come forward pretty soon as well. Next, I'll pass it on to Ms. Jessica Trevino.
Madam Chair, hold on a second. Can you go back to the, the, I'm sorry?
Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you go back to Spring Two Thousand Twenty-Four Enrollment Comparison? That slide? So where it says current ten thousand one hundred and eighty-six, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're still enrolling students for the, okay.
That is why my
Want to make that clear.
The, the top arrow is facing forward instead of up because we're still enrolling.
Because we still have the second eight-week session to come.
Any other questions?
No, ma'am.
So just very briefly, enrollment updates, we had already discussed the Laredo College Application Drive taking place this Saturday alongside the LC Fun Fest, we will be at the Lerma Peña Building from twelve to five P.M. With our partners from Texas A&amp;M International University, we're inviting the community at large to come in and complete their applications for enrollment and/or financial aid. We will be hosting a Laredo College in the Community event in partnership with LISD on Wednesday, March twentieth. This is also open to the public, but with our partners from LISD, we hope to be able to promote and recruit students into our diverse programs as well as LISD staff, parents, and anyone in the community that wants to, to come to the event. Important to note here, I do have additional updates regarding financial aid. I know we've been updating you month after month regarding the FAFSA application. I am happy to announce that we have received the first couple of rounds of test ICERS or test applications. These are simply test students that we receive and upload into our system to make sure that our system is ready to obtain the real files in the near future. This testing is ongoing because as we're receiving applications, we're fixing any glitches that the system may have as we upload the new version of these ICERS. On that note, last month, I presented to you on the issue that we're having with students whose parents or contributors do not have social security numbers. That continues to be an ongoing issue that has been noted by the Department of Education, and they have put forth a commitment that by mid-March, this, this issue should be resolved. They are encouraging students whose contributors do not have a social security number to please hold till mid-March to submit the application. For those students that have already submitted an application, it will be returned as a rejected file that will need a couple of corrections. So again, just wanted to update you on that because that is crucial for our student population. We do have quite a number of students whose contributors do not have a social security number, and we want to make them aware that we continue to press for an answer and that they're committing to mid-March for a solution for that issue. There is a news article where you can, it literally says the first half of March in their commitment. And last but not least, I did want to mention, I am not going to show it to you today because I do believe credit, the person should take credit or credit is earned. But Mr. Jorge Dimas, our Director of the Office of Admissions, has been diligently working along with our IT team on a admissions application status tool online. So a student will be able to view real-time where their admissions application stands and how, and how they're moving along in the process. This is crucial because it opens up transparency with the student and it allows the student to know at every stage in the application process where that is. I, again, like I mentioned, I will not show it to you because I will let him present it next month, but it is an amazing tool and it allows us to communicate with the student in real-time.
That's very good.
Any question?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is ten B. Notification of the Serving of Alcoholic Beverages At the Licensed U.S. Custom Brokers Association, Inc., LUSBA. Spring Mixer As per Laredo College Board, Community, and Government Relations Policy, GDA Local, Community Expression and Use of College Facilities Conduct on College District Permiss, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. So LUSBA, who is one of our tenants, is having their spring mixer on March twenty-second. And they're going to determine if they're going to use either the Commander's Home or the Chapel. But in anticipation of their event, we're going to, we wanted to come before the board to let you all know that this is going to happen and that they will be serving adult beverages. And so in compliance with our policy, I wanted to let you all know. We're, we're not funding any of this, they're, they're, and they're paying for any incidental costs that they may incur that evening in using our facility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is the President's Remarks, we have eleven A. Campus Police Personnel and Travel Reports. And eleven B, President's Remarks, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again, yes. Uh, yes, uh, as you all have heard this evening, there are lots of things happening on our campuses and, and everybody's excited about what's to come and what, what we're doing. Uh, but, um, in your packet, you did receive the most recent, um, Campus Police, uh, report. And so I, I won't belabor you with that, uh, as far as, um, travel. Uh, next week we will be traveling to Lakeway, Texas for the, um, uh, TAC trustee and, uh, President, Presidents and Chancellors Institute. Uh, and, uh, we'll be leaving Monday afternoon and returning on Wednesday evening. Uh, so that, um, that is happening as far as travel is concerned. Um, also, uh, the reminder that Fun Fest is coming up this Saturday from 12 to 5:00. As you can see, or some of you may have seen, everything will be happening on the interior of the campus. The, the animal, um, exhibit will be off on, to the north side of the Maravillo Gym. The stage will be placed in front of the Maravillo Gyms. So hopefully, um, that will, um, entice more people to come in. Uh, we do have, uh, Laredo College Fort Macintosh as a polling site, uh, in partnership with Webb County Elections Office. The, the voting site is in the Kason Center. Uh, they requested to, to use Laredo College. Uh, we will also be open for not just early voting, but on election day. And, well, it's not we, it's them using our facility. Uh, we have encouraged employees and students to use the, this, this service as provided by the Webb County Elections Office. We encourage you and, and the public, um, that if they need to use the, the, this service being provided by them on our campus, to please do so. Um, there's a new law that does not require us to vote in a particular precinct even on election day. And so I hope that people will take advantage of the opportunity and the, and the convenience of coming to Laredo College and visiting our campus. Uh, yes, ma'am?
Well, they, you're on, on Saturday.
Yes, so Saturday, the day of Fun Fest, uh, they will be here all day from 8:00 to 8:00. Uh, they do have rules about people wearing, um, paraphernalia for a particular candidate. So I, I think they'll even tell you like to turn it inside out or stuff like that. So, so please be, if you're helping someone, please, we ask people to refrain from politicking on campus. There are designated areas that, uh, we've worked out with the Webb County Elections, uh, office, uh, behind the, uh, Moore Building in Parking Lot O, there is a designated space for those that want to, uh, pick it or, or whatever you call it. I don't, I don't know what to call it when you want to come hold up your signs. Um, there is a designated space there. Uh, and so, uh, we're not policing this. They are, uh, we just, we're just providing the location. So. Okay. We have a car show coming up on April the 20th on the South Campus. Um, and, and we've been very fortunate this year, both the Fun Fest and now the Car Show. Uh, we've been able, uh, to find a title sponsor for both of these events like we did for the Fun, for the Fall Fest. Uh, our title sponsor for Fun Fest is AEP Foundation and, um, that's thanks to, uh, Dr. Diana Ortiz and Mr. Tony Arce. And our car show sponsor this year will be Gonzalez Auto Parts. And so, uh, they, they've already been meeting, they've already been planning all kinds of things. Uh, and we will also allow our student organizations to set up booths, uh, to sell food. And so last year we had over 240 cars on exhibit.
Wow.
So this year we'll probably have a larger car show on April the 20th. We encourage people to put that on their calendars already. Um, today.
And what campus again?
The South Campus.
South Campus.
Yeah, where we have our automotive program.
Yes.
And so, uh, it makes sense. And they're, they're the ones that are organizing the whole event and so it should be a great event again this year. Um, we submitted on Friday of last week, our OCR audit report, uh, to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and we received today, uh, already, we got our, our response. And so we have, um, two minor, uh, recommendations that we hope to have completed by spring break, because we don't want that lingering. And one is to translate our website into Spanish or have the ability for it to be translated. Am I correct? Yes.
Very good.
There's a, there has to be a translate button that right now we don't have. Uh, and the other finding was.
Have a procedure for, um, students or employees that need service available?
Oh, yes. Oh, that's right. I forgot about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't have that in our, not in our policy or our, our standard operating procedures. And so we're working on that as well and, and hopefully we'll, we'll have that, um, added to our program. Uh, and so those are two mine, well, I think they're minor. I, I'm sure to someone who needs it, it isn't minor. So we're taking it very seriously. We'll have it corrected, uh, and then we'll bring you a, a, a clean bill of health from, uh, the Office of Civil Rights and from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. And that's in thanks to, um, Dr. Ariasola and his team and, and certainly everybody on campus who is affected by all of these OCR rules and regulations, uh, and making sure that we have the proper documentation, um, at the bottom of every piece of media that goes out, every, uh, on our website, on every application, everything we put out publicly has to have the disclaimer, um, and there is appropriate verbiage for that. So we're in compliance of all of that. Um, I already told you about, um, Renee Montemayor and his distinguished, um, award from Tache. We're very proud of, of what he's done and, and certainly what he continues to do as Chair for the Department. And with that, um, my name is, I'm done. I think so. Let me just check. Yes.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. On the, uh, 29th of, uh, February, well, for this month, uh, Laredo College initially was going to be the, uh, actual swearing in of, uh, Judge Kason. And now I am aware that it has been, uh, moved over to Tame U. Is there any particular reason why that actually happened?
Your choice. Yes. Uh, so a couple of things in speaking to Judge Kason, um, we're very excited. He wanted to have it here, uh, but as you all may recall from previous swearing ins, judges fly in from all over the state of Texas to, to participate. Uh, they're on a very short time schedule to get it done. So their flights get in at 1:30 or 1:20, whatever the flight is, and then it leaves at 5:20. So, so by the time they would get here, we wouldn't be able to start till 3 o'clock. The ceremony typically takes about an hour to an hour and 10 or 15 minutes, depending on how long the speeches are. The judges would not be able to return to, to, to the airport on time to make a 5 o'clock flight. So it, 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 and I, in all honesty, I mean, they've had others there at, at the Tame U Fine and Performing Arts Center and they're, they're equally beautiful than, and so we understand. So. It, it is a time thing.
Yeah.
I mean, let me make a, just a little, a little side observation, a little side comment. Uh, I don't know if some of you are aware of it, but, uh, Judge Kason's father, George Kason, his date of birth was the 29th of.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay? And, uh, so he actually, uh, had his birthday every four years, so to speak. And of course we had a tendency to kid with him. Uh, those of us that were very fortunate to have a good, good, uh, relationship, uh, with that, uh, gentleman, to be frankly. And I, I personally was honored that he swore me in when I got elected County Judge. Yes, it may, uh, this is the main reason why, in my opinion, uh, his son selected the 29th of February in honor of his father.
Yeah.
And, uh, it is really, really, uh, quite, quite an honor. And we're very proud of, of him, uh, being actually being sworn in as a federal judge and also presiding in the federal court named after his own father.
That's right.
So that is a big, big plus. Cool thing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, thank you. Any other comments?
No ma'am.
That's interesting.
Next item is number 12, the next meeting date and I'm kept, and up, upcoming event, Saturday, February 24th, 12 to 5:00 PM, Laredo College Fun Fest. I encourage everybody to come and show your support to our employees and everybody. Uh, March 11th through the 15th, 2024 is spring break. Thursday, March 28th, 2024 is 6:00 PM is our regular Board of Trustees meeting. Any question?
Motion adjourned.
So I have a motion by Mr. Rangel. I have a second by Ms. Ramos and Mr. Delgado. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.